Councilmember Garcia?
I'm here.
Councilmember Candy's absence from tonight's meeting is noticed. Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protem McHaggren?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
I don't have a cheat sheet here in front of me because I'm overloaded with so much information that I have never seen before. We have someone for the prayer?
There is no invocation, but a pledge of allegiance, yes.
Okay, we'll just have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all stand and face the flag, place your hand over your heart and repeat that for me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Welcome, everyone, to this city council meeting, 5/27/2014. First item on the agenda is a public hearing. Mr. Chris Portchard. Do you have any additional information? Any presentation, any comments?
I don't believe staff has any.
The reason I ask is because I know that several individuals have claimed that they've been meeting with the staff in order to either object or support or work out an agreement. I have nothing in front of me that says, other than individuals who said they're trying to meet with the staff. Mr. City Manager, did individuals meet with the staff, or you, or anyone, in regard to this first public hearing item?
A week ago, we met with members of the BIA, as well as two developers, as I recall, who presented some information to you. That information was actually taken by staff and, excuse me, I said a week ago, I meant two weeks ago, taken by staff and incorporated where possible. But other than that, I'm not aware of any additional meetings. I see Chris shaking his head no. I don't believe there's been any beyond that.
I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. I don't, I have a stack of cards I'm trying to go through. If you have filled out a card and you are interested in speaking to this council in regard to the public hearing item, and I'm assuming all of these are the public hearing items, is that correct?
That's correct.
Then I will call on individuals, as I have received these. Chris Dingle? I think it's D-I-N-Y-E-L-L, or D-I-N-G-E-L-L, Chris?
Chris Dingle.
Would you spell the last name, please?
E-I-N-G-E-L-L.
Okay, thank you.
I'm at 3455 Cliff Shadows Parkway, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89129, excuse me. I'm with Focus Property, and we own about 500 acres in the Victor Valley. About 400 of those acres are in the specific plan, the crossings, and we would just like to object to the proposed changes, and we put most of our objections in writing and submitted them today.
Okay, thank you. The next individual, Ann McDonald? Just so we'll be prepared, the next was Mr. or FG Abercromey, so you can get prepared as soon as Mr. McDonald finishes. Go ahead.
My name is Ann McDonald. I'm a real estate broker here in Victorville, and also a Realtor. And I'm objecting to this proposal simply because the affordability index in this area is already pretty low. This will make it more difficult by making the lots bigger and therefore more costly. But to me, the biggest problem is the reason why this seems to be necessary is to supposedly reduce crime, and that's not the problem. Lot sizes are not the problem. It's the enforcement of the existing laws that are not being taken into account. And if that was taken care of instead of reducing lot sizes, our problems would probably go away a lot quicker. Just a real quick personal story that happened this past weekend. Family moving from Barstow, wanting to move into an area that had a lot more conveniences, but they were told by close friends to not work, not move into Victorville because it was not safe, and that is totally unacceptable. I love Victorville. I'd like to see that change. Thank you.
Thank you. FG Abercromey, following that individual, Kathryn Haney, so that you can be prepared to be the mic when the speaker in front of you finishes.
Yes.
Thank you.
My name's FG Abercromey. I'm a real estate agent, and I have a couple of questions. The first question I have is talking about increasing the lot size only about 2,800 square feet for each lot. I don't know how that's going to advantage or make happen what you guys are asking for to happen, is to help get people away from each other, basically. So I don't know that that's going to do that much, because 2,800 square foot is a good-sized house, and that's it. The other thing is, the loss to, for, for the city, just based on 10,000 lots, you're going to lose about 51 million. That's just on 10,000 lots, and it goes up from there. If you go up to, say, 50,000 lots, you're losing 257 million, and that's only in building fees and tax revenue. But a question I ask is very simple. Is a 2,800 square foot worth $250 million?
Thank you, Mr. Abercromey. Kathryn Haney, immediately following Kathryn Haney, Bo Cooper.
Hello, I'm Kathryn Haney. I'm with a broker associate up here in the Victor Valley. I've been here 10 years. When I came up here, we were selling homes right and left on 7,200 square foot lots, no problem. We have a crime problem. We don't have a lot size problem. Our clients and the people that are moving up here do not need to know that the city of Victorville is known as Victorville. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bo Cooper. I know you're down here already, as I requested you to be. And after that, Ron McRae. We have so many cards, it would be helpful if you would. Thank you. Go ahead, Bo.
Mayor Cox, members of the council, my name is Bo Cooper, the entitlement manager for United Engineering Group. I first wanted to, I just wanted to touch and expand on some points I made at the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago. I was able to speak with, with staff over the phone last week to clarify a few points, and I will thank, thank Scott for, for taking the time to do that. But it did not address one of my main, my main issues. I sent in a letter last week regarding the application of these new standards to tentative track map lots. In this proposal, it is said that tentative track maps you have that are entitled will still be allowed to record, and you can keep your 7,200 square foot lot size. However, these new guidelines would be applied to those recorded lots on, on those tentative track maps. With these increased setbacks and the, and the other design guidelines as far as 50%, garage frontage, and others, you can see in some of the stuff that I, I sent over, three out of the five examples that staff has in their reports for alternative designs don't work. So even though the proposal says you can still record your lot, your tentative track map, and keep your lot size, it's, it's not feasible to do so. You wouldn't be able to build any homes on those lots. So I urge you to table this while we further analyze and discuss these guidelines and come up with a better solution.
Just so I will understand, are you saying because of the design, because of the setback, because of what?
Because of the, the design standards that are proposed. On a 7,200 square foot lot, you would be left with 35 feet width for a house.
Okay.
Of that 35 feet, only, you cannot, your garage cannot, cannot be more than 50% of that. Most garages are 20 feet wide. So you already can't meet that guideline right there.
On the current 72...
On a current 72 with these guidelines.
All right, I understand. Thank you. Ron McRae? And following Mr. McRae, Mark M. Clermont.
Mayor, members of the council. I should point out, I did have the opportunity to talk with Doug and the mayor and express my, my thoughts on the resolutions that are proposed tonight. I want to tell you adamantly that I am opposed to them. What I would like to inform you of tonight is the background of some of those individuals that have put up, in some cases, their life savings into some of these land tracts that we have a temptancy to treat quite lightly. My company has organized syndications of quite a number of private individuals who, at the moment, own 12 different properties in your city, constituting 2,800 lots, some of which are finished, but the bulk of which are TTM's. We have some commercial, but most of it is residential and will be impacted dramatically by the provisions that you are proposing. The typical individual in our syndications is somebody who wants to get ahead, somebody who wants to make a profit and, that would enable them to have their children go to college, or potentially make their life a little better in retirement. These are not wealthy people. They are not large institutions. They're people no different than you folks and the people in this audience. What has happened in those 12 properties is that they were acquired now 10, 12 years ago, and acquired as raw land, and then zoned, and then engineers were hired, money was spent to complete tentative track maps, time was spent with staff, and then with the Planning Commission, and finally council. That whole process took years and literally hundreds of thousands of dollars. We have spent to date on those 12 properties over $20 million, most of which is going to be ruined. The dreams of these people will be lost. They will be forced to take the properties that currently have TTM's, and when they expire, resubmit for three lots to the acre instead of four, they will have to meet these new design guidelines. The houses will of necessity be larger because of the design guidelines and the setbacks, and those homes will now be more expensive than what you currently find on a 7,200 square foot lot. That means two things. Builders wanting to come to your town are going to shy away because in 2012, your medium family income was not much over $50,000 a year. That means that there's only certain families in this town that can afford homes that are going to be built on a 10,000 square foot lot. And what is going to happen is that the builders, and I think Mr. Lewis will probably confirm this tonight, those builders are not going to come here. And, and I've heard sounds that your town now is talking about being a no-growth town, and you don't want the impact fee monies and the, the fee income that comes in. I know we have presented you with a report by Dr. Husing. In my experience, having developed land in more than 20 or 30 cities, I will tell you that income in those cities has always been extremely important. So my point tonight in summation is that the dreams of these private individuals are going to be ruined, and they're going to be ruined because they can't afford to start all over again. They've gone through a terrible recession. They carried on for seven years longer than they ever expected. Most of these properties have debt. They had to pay interest. They had to pay property taxes. They had to pay maintenance fees. And now, just as the building market is coming back, you're pulling the rug out from underneath them, and they got to start all over again, and they can't do that, and it's not fair. I mentioned to Mr. Robertson a few weeks ago that for over 20 years, I've been bringing capital to your city, and I've been doing it because you people abide by the rules. You're fair-minded. Some of your rules are tough, but when you abide by them, you end up with decent product. And we have now proceeded for almost 12 years with these individuals, and all of a sudden, that fair-mindedness is going away, and it's not right. You are hurting people, and you should really think about it. Thanks very much.
Mark Clermont, followed by Dean Paradise? Hello.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Mark Clermont. I'm general counsel for Lansing Companies, a land development company based in San Diego. We own two properties here in Victorville. The first one is known as the Rancho Tierra Specific Plan. It's about 128 acres, 555 lots. We have a tentative track map. That's at the southeast corner of Rancho Road and Amethyst Road. We have a second property, 175 lots total, southeast corner of Hoplin Street and Cohanga Road, tentative track map, five phases on that. First two phases have been built out. We have about 88 lots remaining. This current proposal essentially will, will hurt our ability to further develop these. We're concerned that our tentative track map will essentially become useless, and we'll have to start the process over, really calling into question the viability of the project in totality. In our experience of 33 years of development, increasing lot sizes won't accomplish the goals that the council wants to achieve. However, my point today is to urge the council to not take my word for it, but take a step back, do some studies, identify the problems, and let's develop some effective solutions together with the development and business communities to achieve the goals that the council really wants to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Paradise, followed by Cecil Vols, I'm sorry, V-O-L-S-Y, or, you know who you are, so you will follow the speaker. Mr. Paradise, go ahead, please. Thank you.
Couple of, two years ago, I bought a house at 14825 Rosemary. It's a 4,000 square foot lot. I did that because I didn't want to maintain the other 4,000 square feet. I'm a civil engineer, and I'm here to read a letter by RY Properties. Dear Honorable Councilmembers, we respectfully request that the above-mentioned item not be approved and adopted. Our company and its affiliated companies have invested considerable amounts of resources into the city of Victorville over the last several decades and are very concerned about the impacts that some of these changes could have on the city's economy. One of our projects is a large commercial retail shopping center, and we have had difficulty convincing tenants to open new stores at our center due to the lack of new rooftops in the city. We believe these changes could have a negative impact on new rooftops being developed and built in the city in the future, and thus affect and delay our progress in providing more amenities to the residents and more revenue-producing sales tax generators for the city. Also, we have not seen any compelling evidence on how or if increasing the sizes of minimum lots could decrease crime, increase value, safety, and quality of life on the neighborhoods. We hope the city would consider that such a major change would require an overwhelming convincing reason for the change. There have been good arguments and evidence shown by the BIA against increasing lot sizes, and that evidence supports keeping everything as it is and not making any changes. Please do not consider making a change just to make a change. We have invested in the city of Victorville for several decades because we have always had confidence in the leadership, guidance, and vision set forth by the city council. We hope that the current city council continues to show the same leadership and vision and determine that it would not be in the best interest of the city to approve the minimum lot size changes. The letter is signed by Greg Kwan and President Robert Yu. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm, my apologies to you because I could not read the last name, Cecil, followed by Chris Haynes.
My name is Cecil Vols. I'm a local real estate broker.
Could you spell that last name, pardon?
Heasen Victory O-L-S-C-H.
C-H, okay. Thank you very much. My, my problem.
It's okay. Thanks, Jim. Thank you, guys, for having this opportunity for us to talk to you, because it's a very important subject to us, to me, and to people that I help sell houses to. Now, what we need here in, in the high desert, in Victorville especially, is we need more, more code enforcement officers, and we need, need more sheriffs. You have a crime problem. Making the lots bigger isn't going to make that problem go away. Having more sheriffs to do that will, and I think taking 25% of the houses that people are going to live in and pay taxes in and buy shoes and buy cars and buy pizzas and everything else, you're not going to sell 25% more cars or 25% more pizzas or anything else to people who are working locally and just because the house is bigger and the lot's bigger. The building people have already told you that the designs just don't make any sense for them to, to make the projects viable. There's going to be billions of dollars lost. It's been, it's been well over a billion dollars. Now, obviously, the more people that are here, the more people will pay taxes, and pay taxes is how everything runs, and people buy goods and services from the local businesses, and if they can't, you just heard the gentleman before me talking about developers bringing in stores, they can't, they, it doesn't make sense if there's not new houses coming in, and, and what this is really doing is killing jobs. And I, I think the concept of, of having a smaller lot size increasing crime, then, by that same logic, that crime must be out of control in Irvine, because the lots down there are certainly not 10,000 square feet. So I, I think the, the, the concept is just misguided that somehow reducing the lot size is going to eliminate the crime problem. That's not, that not going to solve it, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. The next individual, Chris Haynes, that's followed by Brian Goodman.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Haynes, and I'm the Inland Empire Division President for KB Home. Mayor, city council, thanks for your time. I'll get to the point, and I'll be brief. At KB, we've built more than 1,240 homes in your city. Currently, we own more than 680 lots in your city. We feel we have a vested interest in your city, and frankly, we've enjoyed our time here and appreciate our relationship. I'm here for two reasons. The first simply is to urge you to vote no against a smaller lot size ordinance, and second, to point out there are better ways to reach your goals of a more beautiful, safe, and prosperous city. If it's growth you're seeking and not a complete halt to new home construction in your city, then you have willing partners in KB Home, dozens of developers, builders, and Realtors. I know I speak for dozens of builders, developers, all of our trade partners and Realtors when I say you have our interest. We're willing, and we want to sit down with you and work this out together, and we hope it'll go that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Brian Goodman, will you come up, please, followed by Carlos Rodriguez?
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Brian Goodman. I'm representing Overhead Investment Company. I wanted to make sure that the council received and read the letter filed today with the city clerk in opposition to each of the proposed ordinances as applied to the Parkview Specific Plan. That letter outlines with supporting evidence, including and exhibits many legal violations that will occur. The city council approves the ordinance as is currently proposed. We intend to pursue vigorously those legal claims if the subject ordinances are approved. It's a somewhat ominous intro, but there is some good news. Like Chris said, we are here saying we want to work together, and we want to help you solve the challenges you're facing as a community. We truly do support change, but it has to be done right and fairly for all the stakeholders. Let's form a smaller working task force, roll up our sleeves, and jointly recommend how the city's goals can be accomplished, implement a rental home inspection process, engage other experts to help advise us as well. We all work together, and everyone wins in this scenario. The bad news that we alluded to earlier, if you do pass this item, we will pursue litigation. We all lose time, money, and Victorville's problems are not changed. We are extremely confident we will win in court. You may have been given different advice, but are you prepared to gamble your taxpayers' money on litigation expense when you could be using those resources to pay for more police and code enforcement? Let's spend time and money solving problems, not in court. We've invested millions in planning and engineering, and changing the rules so dramatically at this point is not the right thing to do. You still have no evidence this proposal will solve any problems. To the contrary, most evidence points that there are more severe negative consequences. Mostly, though, there are many unanswered questions. The resolutions are vague, and I don't know how they would be implemented. My comments made at the Planning Commission on this topic were ignored. We want kids to play in large backyards as one of the goals, but then we force the garage to the back of the lot, which makes that same yard smaller. I don't know how that makes any sense. There have been statements about existing specific plans not being sufficient. I don't know what's wrong with our Parkview Specific Plan, but it's got parks and paseos and fabulous guidelines. We think it's a great plan, but we're here also to say, let's look at it together, and we'd be more than happy to see if we can make some improvements. Instead of one-way communication, three minutes at a time, let's have a real dialogue. We've already proven we want to work with you. There's so many questions, so many issues. I ask you to save your taxpayers' money and work with us in the true spirit of cooperation. Thank you.
Carlos Rodriguez, followed by Carolyn Hodgson?
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, I'd ask that you consider the following remarks from your Planning Commission on May 14th. Quote, "When I toured Liberty Village, which has half-acre lots, it was a disaster. Lots full of junk and rusty cars. I feel that 7,200 square foot lots are sufficient for a commuter community such as ours would have limited time for yard work." Quote, "I support the design guidelines in improving the city, however, I do not think the increased lot sizes is the right way to go about making better things happen." Quote, "Design guidelines are the key. Focusing on lot sizes is putting the cart before the horse. We need to have a responsible, reasonable growth, and we need the development community and city to reach a common ground." Quote, "We are not in an emergency to make a decision tonight, and I do not think it would be fair to the citizens to do so with so many questions left outstanding." Quote, "We need more time and more workshops to make an informed decision and spend more time working on this issue." The BIA Baldwin Chapter urges you to support your Planning Commission's recommendation to take more time to study the downzoning proposal. Indeed, there are many reasons to take more time to consider this proposal. First and foremost, there are significant legal problems to consider, as highlighted in the letter submitted today by the BIA SC Legal Counsel, Shonda Beltran. There are also very serious economic implications, as highlighted by Dr. John Husing, and the city staff to date has yet to offer a formal response to the study, which, again, highlighted $1.2 billion in lost revenue and over 9,000 jobs in over the next 17 years. We remain steadfast in our commitment to identify alternative solutions to addressing your concerns, such as the design standards we presented at the previous workshop. Furthermore, we urge the city council to take the additional time and accept our previous offer to coordinate a community tour of our recommendations in practice. The Planning Commission has requested more time, so our request cannot be deemed anything but reasonable. We hope you will work with us to explore solutions that can truly address the goals you outlined in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Hodgson, please, followed by Gronar Morris.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? I'm Carolyn Hodgson. I'm a retired teacher. The issue that I'm going to address is probably a thorn in your sides.
Before we continue, my, I just noticed that you wanted to speak on Agenda Item Number Three.
Is, is it?
I'm sorry, we're on public hearing number one. I, that's my mistake. You can go ahead now if you want to, but since we're on this, I can call you back when we get to Item Three.
Well.
My apologies. I mean, I called your name. If you want to go ahead now, we'll apply it to Item Three, but my mistake.
Okay. Well, then I'll go ahead. When it comes to the law, I'm quite a purist, and I have a concern, as many people, and that's regarding in particular the, the camera light at Mariposa and Bear Valley. I do everything I can to... I do everything I can to avoid it because that camera often miss flashes. As I said, I'm a bit of a purist and I quote from Amendment 6. One phrase, "The nature and cause of the accusation to be confronted against the witnesses to him."
Could you speak out of the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm not real fond of these things. To have the assistance of counsel in his defense. What concerns me is that if when a person has experienced this, they don't have any choice. The camera flashes, the, somebody operates a camera out of the state of Arizona and you don't have, you just really don't have any recourse except to go on over and pay the fine because of the concerns that you would have on your insurance. I think it's unfair and I would really like to see it removed. It's a big traffic problem and besides, I believe more uniformed officers can make better judgments when it concerns a number of things that can occur. I think we have much more confidence in uniformed officers who can make common sense judgments. Thank you.
Thank you. And my apologies for the public hearing. I noticed after I called this lady that it was on the item number three, but we will consider her comments, item number three, not on this item. Garner Morris?
Good afternoon.
Followed by, just so they'll get ready, Carrie Leon.
I address 13450 El Rio Road in Victorville. We own, I'm not a realtor, I'm just a person trying to raise a family. We have five properties in the area and looking to buy more. But the one thing that we are concerned about is code enforcement. And for that reason, the lack of code enforcement, as we see it in Victorville, we've decided not to purchase in Victorville. So lot sizes may be, that's not my concern. My concern is keeping the neighborhood clean. Around the corner from me there, I found 12 cars parked and I don't think they were registered. Behind me were 10 that weren't registered. Code enforcement, when I complained, they did do it, but not until I complained that they'd do anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Garner. Carrie Leon, followed by Philcy V E V A, I'm sorry, Neville? You know who you are. My apologies for mispronouncing your name. You're going to follow Carrie Leon. Ms. Leon, go ahead.
Honorable Mayor, Jim Cox and Town Council, my name is Carrie Leon and I'm the President of the Victor Valley Association of Realtors. Per our duty to our members and the quality of life of the people in the high desert, the association submitted the city's plan to reduce the lot sizes to our legal analysis team. It should be noted that this is not a legal opinion nor is this a precursor to any legal action. It was merely used as information for us, our members and the community on this important issue. The realtors have a number of resources available that we could work with the city to help identify and address the issues that the city wants to address. We have grants available that would help educate homeowners and tenants and landlords on practices that would best address community standards. We have funds available to help identify opportunities for refurbishment of community assets that would help raise the profile and pride of the community. We have polling available to identify what would be the best way to move forward in the eyes of the community. Let's work together and solve these issues in a productive and cooperative way. Let's use our resources to assist the city in these endeavors. Let us be partners, not adversaries, especially when our goals are aligned. Respectfully, please take the time to work with us and find solutions to these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is, I'm sorry, but I can't read the writing and maybe it's my glasses, but I think it's Josie N E V A L E or V E. I don't want to read your address, but that's the only way I can identify you as well.
Anavi? Josie?
I'll hold it aside. Dino DeFazio, followed by Gerald Kukuski.
Dino DeFazio, 15268 Riverside Drive, Apple Valley, California. Couple of things I wanted to bring up here. Several years ago, and I own a 20 acre piece, 50% on Nisqually and Cypress, and I built a subdivision in Asperia, which I would recommend that all of you look at. It's called Regency Square. And the minimum lot size I have in there is a lot that's 60 by 112, which is under 7,000 feet. The largest lot in there was 90 by 112, which is under 10,000 feet. All the problems you're talking about, you don't have in that subdivision. I made the setbacks 5 and 12 so people can get RVs in the backyard and they can park in the back. The wider lots made the houses look better. The setback thing, I'm really against the 10 and 15 because you can solve the problem even with 4 and 12 or 3 and 12, just so that people can get access to the backyard. But if you drive through, which is right near your neighboring community in Asperia, the largest lot is 9,900, the smallest lot is 6,500 and you don't see any cars parked. There's no repos, there's no neighborhood problems. So, you know, I recommend kind of looking at it and really thinking about this 10 and 15. It really bothers me on a 60-foot lot or 70-foot lot that you're going to have 30 and 40-foot houses and they're not going to look good. They're going to look like all garages. There are some neighborhoods in Victorville that I've driven in in the past over behind the mall where if you drive by and I think there are 4,000, 4,500 foot lots where all you see is garage. I don't like those type of neighborhoods. So what you're going to cause by making these 10 and 15 foot setbacks is you're going to cause houses to not look attractive. They're going to look like all garage. And I really think you need to rethink the setback thing. Like I said, I did 5 and 12. It was very important to me that people can have RV access, that they can drive in their backyards and a 12-foot setback does allow that. So I really want you to rethink the setback thing. The lot size, and I'm building three houses in Asperia right now. I drove in and I checked out the K and B homes off a village there. They're beautiful homes. There's nothing wrong with the neighborhood. The problem in Victorville was the bank repos. House prices dropped to 35 cents on the dollar. A lot of them got turned into repos. Now we got tenants in these houses. But more than just tenants, you've got three and four and five families living in houses because they built these big 3,000, 3,500 foot houses on 7,000 foot lots. With design standards, you could avoid that. With code enforcement, you can avoid that. And the other thing you're doing by making the lot sizes bigger, you're not allowing those people to buy affordable housing so they can move out and get their own house. If you require the 10,000 foot lots, then they're not building houses at an affordable price. You don't have an affordable price. They stay three, four, five families to the house. And if we had a little more code enforcement, we could take care of the problem. And the other problem in Victorville, and I sell houses and I'm building some houses in Upland and other areas right now, is the school districts. If we can make our schools better, like Silverado and Victor Valley both have a score of three. You've got Oak Hills at seven, Solanas, Berry, Apple Valley, all with higher. People want to move where the schools have more quality. The problem in Victorville, the schools are low, so there's a lot of quality people that won't move to Victorville because of low schools. But making small lots doesn't solve the problem and I really am against the setbacks. And I really would like you to not vote on it tonight, especially the setback issue, and rethink it. Actually, look at that neighborhood I built, 6,000 to 9,900 foot and you don't have any cars parked on the streets. There's no crime. There was no repos during the repo time. So standards can make the difference. K and B, they're building beautiful homes. I toured their homes. That neighborhood's not going to be a problem. Your problem neighborhoods are already existing. The only way to turn around the problem neighborhoods is with more code enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Dino. I'm sorry, next, again, I guess I'm having problems with my glasses tonight. Gerald Kukuski? Kukuski? You'll have to help me with the pronunciation. My apologies.
My name is Gerald Kokosker, otherwise I go by Jerry Coco. Honorable Mayor and Council Members, I'm probably one of the biggest persons that's responsible for the city of Victorville, being the way the city of Victorville is today. I've been in this area for plus 20-plus years. I brought the builders here. I brought the investors here. I brought everybody here 20-plus years ago. Okay, I have been a property owner. I have lived in Victorville for many years myself. And I'm a current property owner and I'm a builder in the existing neighborhoods. And one of the questions I would have at first in asking, because I've done this for 20-plus years in the city of Victorville and I haven't had this answer yet, but I'm checking into, how many people up here on this panel own some of this property that you're talking about changing? I'd be curious to find out what effects it would have on you if you owned property that was being quote-unquote downsized from potentially 5 to the acre to 3 to the acre. Okay, I've been a builder. I know 3 to the acre does not work. I also have been involved in commercial property up here. You cannot make commercial property and the tax dollars and revenues work on 3 to the acre. I'm sure Walmart is pretty concerned right now about what's going on and the properties that I'm involved with or friends that I have that are involved with, they're concerned about their commercial property such as along your major thruways, 395. How are you going to support commercial development in this town? It doesn't work. I hope you really reconsider and think about what you're doing. Now, maybe it's just something that you think or quote-think that's going to be best for Victorville, but is it best for the people in Victorville is what I question. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Randall Lewis?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Randall Lewis. I'm here speaking in opposition to the proposal tonight and to ask, as so many others have, that you take the recommendation of the planning commission and take more time to find a win-win solution. I was asked to speak by BIA, I think, for two reasons. First, because our family, our company, has been a landowner in the city for a long time. And secondly, because I've been involved in this development industry for over 40 years in the valley. So on issues of planning, I'm someone who I think knows about as much as anybody in the county does. And so what I wanted to talk about tonight is first, why I think this probably isn't good planning. We've heard from staff that this is good planning and I believe it is not good planning. Secondly, why I think it's not good for the city of Victorville. And thirdly, and unfortunately, what a few of the speakers have referenced, is it almost certainly will lead to legal action and almost certainly will lead, I can't say certainly, but almost certainly will lead to a bad outcome for the city of Victorville. So first, from the planning perspective. I mean, I deal with planning issues throughout Southern California and this is just going counter to the solutions that other communities are doing. One of the first tenets of planning is that market-driven. This is not market-driven. You've heard it over and over. It's not a market-driven solution. A second is, will it solve the problems that the city's looking at? And I think you've heard a dozen speakers or more say there are better solutions from a planning point of view to solve the problems that you've got. It certainly will not encourage pedestrian walkability. And it's just obvious, the bigger the lots, the more things are spread out, the more it's going to be harder for kids to walk or ride their bikes. I think it's just obvious that that's true. It's also not going to be resource efficient as at a time where everybody in Southern California in the state is trying to say, how do we use our resources in a more wise way? This certainly isn't wise to put houses on bigger lots. It's just not resource efficient. So from a planning point of view, it's simply not correct. A second issue is, is it good for Victorville or not? And that one's harder and I know you're doing what you think is best and we hear your questions. We hear the problems and we want to be, as somebody said, we want to be your partners in trying to find the solutions. But I think first is, it's not clear what will happen to the houses that get built. There are two solutions, I think, that are likely. A, it'll result in houses that are a lot more expensive because the lot cost will be a lot. But B, it will result, if they don't do that, it'll be smaller houses to try to hit a price point. I don't think that's what you want. It will result in a lot of your workers, your policemen, your fire, your sheriffs, your teachers will not be able to live in the community where they work. And I think that's a tragedy if that has to happen. It will not be good for your retail. You've already heard retailers want rooftops. This would not be good for your retail. And so I don't see any ways that this will be good. And then lastly, from investors, this will put a chill on the investment community to come. So the last part is the legal side. We don't want to sue. I don't think anybody wants to get in litigation. But all of us have invested hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars in the community in good faith and reliance on the city. And now to change the rules, we are left with no choice but to look at legal options. And listening to a lot of the people in the last couple of weeks, so many people we know are going to be filing lawsuits to try to do what they think is right. So I plead with you and respectfully ask you, please do not support this and please give more time to come up with a win-win solution. We want to work with you. We will be your partner and we will come up with a good solution for your community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. That concludes the cards that I have. Is there anyone who expected to address the City Council at this public hearing process for item one that did not fill out a card? Seeing none, seeing none, before I close the hearing, well, this person never showed up. Before I close the hearing, Mr. City Attorney, I have a lot of information that's submitted. Do we indicate that this becomes a part of the record while the hearing is open? Or can we close the hearing and indicate that that becomes a part of the record? Is a, because of the many, many, many threats of litigation, and I'd like to try a couple of those, I think we could, but that's a different challenge. How do we handle all the written record, Mr. Attorney?
All of the information that you have received during, prior to and as part of this public hearing is all part of the public hearing and all becomes part of what's actually deemed the administrative record that you should then consider in coming to any decision. So until you close the public hearing, people can continue to submit documentation and you should consider all of that information, documentation, et cetera, prior to making any decision.
Because of the testimony that we have received, for those council members that have questions of the staff, can we close the public hearing at this point?
Unless anybody else has additional documentation, but I think you've asked that question and I think it would be appropriate at this point to close the public hearing.
Okay. The public hearing portion of this is closed. I have a question of staff. Sometime in the past, staff has indicated approved lots. And I have, I don't remember the number of tracks or the number of lots, but I have at different times indicated that there is a large number and I've been told that's not so, that this dragnet includes everyone. At one point in time, one of the staff members was saying we had about a 12-year supply of lots. It's already been approved. Could you explain that dichotomy and the difference that's been discussed in the community?
Well, I think the 12-year or that estimate was just based on an average number of houses being built. We have close to 4,000 recorded lots. We have approximately around another 3,000 to 4,000 vested maps, which could record as well. And based on 1,500, 2,000 lots being built a year, somewhere in that range, you know, you can, that was just an estimate. It was just a guess of if the housing market were to come back, you know, over the period of time, how long would it take?
Okay, so the lots that have been vested and approved, that lot size would not change? Whatever they're submitted at, I've looked at one track today where the individual submitted it at 8,000. It was over 8,000 square foot and they submitted, but I'm assuming if they're submitted and approved and they're vested, that remains the same? Is that correct?
If they are recorded vested maps, then you cannot change or impact the lot size.
And there is a proviso on there that if they start, if they record the map, they have a year to build. If they begin in that year and don't finish, then technically the map could expire, but the lots are there. So then the new standards could take place. However, we've talked about the possibility of changing that zone to R1 7,200 if a tract of R1 10,000s was under construction.
Okay. You say that expires in one year. Is that a city ordinance? Because I keep reading about the state that has extended individuals that have vested tracts or tentative tracts that have been submitted. It's not a year. It was up to three years. It does, it's not a year, it was up to three years at one point. What is it at this time, and who made that rule?
These are mostly state laws. The initial approval of three years is a two-year state mandatory, and then the city actually put the extra 12 months on there, probably 10 to 12 years ago, added that proviso in there so that developers wouldn't have to come back after two years and do their environmentals and everything just to extend a map. That way, we made it, we made it three years at the time.
How many times can the City Council extend a map, Mr. Attorney?
I believe, well, state statute has superseded what the city can do, and I believe the city can do it three times, is that correct?
The number of times isn't limited, the number of years is limited to 10 years of worth of extensions. That's in addition to all of the legislative, state legislated ones. We, right now, we do our extensions in periods of three years and three years and two years.
I have another question, and I hope this doesn't sound tongue-in-cheek, because I'm really serious. I have heard various numbers that if we change from 7,200 to 10,000, it will cost the city, I've heard 1.2 billion, I've heard 12 billion, I think, maybe somebody missed a decimal, and 9,000 jobs. Is that because 7,200 is magic? Or is it because the less number of houses, because if it's the less number of houses, then it stands to reason that if we zone the lots 4,500 square foot, we will gain additional 12 billion over what we would gain at 7,200, and additional 9,000 jobs over the normal jobs? I talked to an individual who said that's, it doesn't work that way, so, the staff even looked at those dollar figures. It's scary when you have a group of people telling your citizens that the council's action is going to cost $12 billion. And I looked at Apple Valley with their half-acre lots and thought of the billions and billions and billions that they've charged, cost those people, but it seems like they're in pretty good shape, and I'm not sure if this is just pure speculation, or just another scare tactic that we're hearing lately.
I'm not sure, we did not look into that, but we assumed the same as you did, that it was based on the number of houses being reduced.
Are there any questions of the City Council, before I ask the council a question? Any council for clarification?
I have a question. How many 4,000-square-foot lots do we have that are vested?
I don't know if we have an exact number on that, do you have a guess?
The specific plans that we have within the city, they're a fraction of the overall 14,000-plus tentative maps that we have. But to give a rough number of how many of them are 4,000, I would, I would say it's not, it's, it's in the hundreds, it's probably only about 300 to 400 of them are down to 4,000-square-foot minimum lots.
And those, the 4,000-square-foot lots, are they clustered, or are they spread?
The 4,000-square-foot lots are located within the specific plans of PUDs within the city. They're, they're mainly clustered in a zone that allowed for 4,000-square-foot lots. So they're not spread with, next to larger lots, they're mainly condensed in an area that has 4,000.
Now, what is the percentage of lots that are 70, below 7,200?
Of the tentative maps that we have, when I said that number of 14,000, there's only about 3,000 of those, those that are part of a plan unit development or a specific plan, which would be less than the 7,200. So it is a smaller fraction than, than the overall R1 district.
Now, listening to DeFazio's comments, he was saying that if you make the lots wider, could you fit an RV on the side on 7,200-square-foot lots?
That is, that is correct. But what most of the development community is talking about is the, the current standard, which is a 60-foot wide lot. So that standard in itself, we found in our neighborhoods, we don't have that setback that's, he referred to a 12-foot setback, we don't have that minimum setback in those neighborhoods to allow the RV to access. But there are 7,200-square-foot lots that have access for an RV, it's just few and far between.
Okay, you're losing me, just a yes or a no. If you made the lots wider at 7,200, could you fit an RV on the side?
If, yes.
Okay. And then, when he referred to the setbacks, could you, could a car fit in the driveway? With, with the setbacks for the wider lot and the RV in a 72?
If, yes.
Yes, okay.
I have a, I want the council to consider, for the record, not only everything that's been submitted in writing, but also want to review the verbal presentations that have been made tonight. I'm not going to debate those, I just want to say that the speaker who referenced Liberty Village, Liberty Village was a county development that got annexed to the city. It doesn't have curbs, gutters, sidewalks, a drainage system, sewers. It was built to the half-acre lot county standards. If someone is going to use that as an example, we have another 3 and 1/2 square miles of half-acre lots that were annexed from the county, and they're all about the same, no curbs, no gutters, no sidewalk, no drainage, no streetlights, no sewers. And I have tried to look at, comparing apples to apples, meaning those built to an urban standard that have all of those amenities that you would normally have in a subdivision, and I have omitted really looking at the half-acre lots, because it's individual builders on individual lots, it isn't a development in those areas. And the reason that I did go look at them is because a couple of builders indicated that, well, there's big lots, but you're not building big houses on them. In fact, there's, I think I'd be surprised to find somebody invest a lot of money in a house that's in a drainage channel with no curbs, gutter, streetlight, sidewalk, sewers, you know, I think it's the circumstances has to be taken into account in each and every one of the areas of the city, and each and every one of the subdivision, the subdivision standard. So I hope the council will have time to review those. The question, I'm sorry. We have another question, Councilmember Weiss.
Okay, so we got it established that at 7,200, you could fit a car in the driveway, an RV on the side, what about a yard for the kids? Would that leave a yard for the kids?
Right now, the minimum is 60 feet wide by 100 feet deep. So if you were to make it wider in order to fit the typical house and an RV on the side, then we're talking probably-
You said 7,200, 60 feet wide, 120 feet in depth?
Yeah, that would be to get the minimum, but the, our minimum depth requirement is 100.
Okay.
So, what do you think? Fit a house and...
It's, it really depends on the product type that the developer decides to build. If they, if they want to max out their frontage and not provide the RV access, then they won't have RV access. If we establish that setback, then, then yes, there'll be that room. But the product could then push back further into the, the rear yard area if they wanted a larger livable space for their dwelling. So it's kind of a trade-off. You widen the lot, it may not have the same amount of depth for a 7,200-square-foot lot, so that could then maybe decrease the area in the rear yard for them to play.
Can, can they build a big old house on a 7,200-square-foot lot?
Yes, currently, the, the max cap is based on their, their lot coverage, which is 40% of their lot. So they could put a, a large house. We've, in the last boom, we built close up to 4,000-square-foot structures on, on a 7,200-square-foot lot.
With the change that you're proposing, would it max, would they still be able to do that? Build those huge houses on such small lots and leave no room?
With the design standard, there's, there's more articulation and variation that requires the massing of that structure to lessen from the, from the street view. So they, it doesn't limit them from maxing out the square footage. So to answer their question, yes, they could still build a large structure on, on the 7,200-square-foot lot. There is more variation, though, and articulation, architecturally, that would be implemented.
Now, is that a single-story or a two-story?
When I reference the 4,000 structure, that's, that's a two-story product.
Question to the City Attorney. Councilmember Kennedy indicated that he wanted to be present, he wanted to be able to vote, he requested that the City Council have a full council present to consider it. Is he precluded from voting since he was not here at this public hearing, or since we're going to preserve the record, and in fact, the council, all the council members are going to review the record, including the both written and verbal submittal? Is there any reason that he cannot vote on this matter?
Absolutely not, as, as long as, I mean, if you take the vote tonight, obviously he can vote, but if the vote is delayed for, and then everybody's given a chance to review all of the material submitted, he certainly is able to not only review the written material submitted, but he can also listen to the, the audio of the meeting and can be fully informed on all of the information to base a decision on.
Councilmembers, like fellow councilpersons, made a request that this item be continued so they could be a participant. Does councilmembers agree, or do we want to proceed?
Continue.
Continue, agree to continue the matter?
Yeah, I think we need to have a full council to have a decision on this item.
Mr. Attorney, can the, since there's three and probably four that would, can agree to continue to abide by Mr. Kennedy's request, does this require a vote for the record from the council, or may I, as the Chair of this body, continue this?
I would recommend that you have a vote of the council to continue, you've just done that as, as course of conduct on continuances in the past, it's not required.
Case, Chair, is open for a motion.
Clarification, does that mean the public hearing will be reopened at a future-
No, I think the, I think for purposes of clarification, the public hearing is closed. My understanding is the only item you're continuing is your decision and staff's consideration of this matter.
I have, I have a question. If we vote on this item tonight, I spoke to you back there, and you said that there could be an issue because they gave us material.
Absolutely, what I would recommend, if you want to vote on it tonight, is we take a recess so that we have some time to consider all of the written information, and that your decision should be based on everything you heard tonight, as well as all of the written materials, and we received a lot of written materials at the 11th hour. So I'd be, it would be beneficial to at least review those materials and not take a vote until you've had a chance to review those materials, which you could do this evening or at some later date.
I want to review this because, in just looking at the material submitted, I have been over most of this, I just don't want to take a chance if there's something included that I haven't seen and had a chance to study, or get clarified by staff. I think it's essential that we study this item carefully, and my recommendation is that we continue this matter. The date of continuance would, it's because the, we do not have to re-advertize, this is simply would continue this matter.
That is correct.
My understanding is that all the council members will be here the last two Tuesdays of June. Do we continue this matter to a date specific, or not?
My knowledge will have a full council last two Tuesdays in June, unless, I'm not aware of it.
I don't know the date, that's why I'm saying the last two Tuesdays.
I will not be at the second council meeting in June, which is the 17th, I believe.
And then the following week would be the 24th.
24th? 24th would be here, be here?
I won't be here, I already told... Yeah, I'll be here on the 24th.
Okay. I think, in, having a very short discussion with Councilmember Kennedy, my understanding he will be here, so that would mean all five councilmembers would be here. Therefore, the motion would be to continue this item, not the public hearing, but the matter, because the public hearing has been closed until the 24th of June. Do we have a motion, please?
Could I get a clarification on the time of the meeting? Five or six?
Five.
I think five would do it, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
The voice vote, please.
Yes.
Voice vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, thank all of you on Item 1 for participating in this, thank you for the information that's submitted. And if in reading through that I have any questions from those who submitted the information, I will contact you immediately, thank you. I'm going to take about a three-minute recess before we continue, so those individuals that were here for Item 1 can clear the chamber, please do so quietly and orderly, we would like to move forward with our agenda. We are at Item Number 2, Draft Budget. City Manager Doug Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dell Mosia, the CFO, has just stood up to give a brief presentation and a bit of a slideshow. And I just wanted to preface it with, staff looked and listened at the last couple of meetings. We focused on really three areas of priority with this budget. That was an increase to the, the number of sheriff's deputies that are patrolling our streets, very loud and clear was the number-one issue for the City Council. Also, a request for an increase in code enforcement, and then a request to increase animal control as well, especially if that animal control has a material impact on our deputies' time. The, the issue about the number of sheriff's deputies is a little bit complicated. I included some information in a cover memo for the draft budget that you have before you tonight. And essentially, as we were looking at adding a couple of sheriff's deputies, Chief LaChia informed me that he'd had discussions with both the Victor Elementary School District and the Victor Valley Union High School District about adding potentially two each to the school resource officer positions. These positions are contracted, when they do, they contract through our contract and actually add deputies to our streets. When the, in the past, when the schools have added these school resource officers, the school picks up 75% of the cost, and the city picks up 25% of the cost, I think with some belief that during the summertime, the city pays for that deputy, and then during the school year, the school pays for that deputy. I don't know if that was the original reason, but that's been the historic split, it's 75-25. So what staff is recommending at this point, at the end of Dell's presentation, is that we take the surplus that we've identified, and based on information I gained tonight, I actually think that number may be going up slightly, but, and budget that into the police budget. The reason for that is that the discussions with the school districts are still unsettled. So if both of the districts decide to add two school resource officer positions, the 25% split would be the equivalent of one deputy to the city's cost. So essentially, what we would be doing is budgeting for, at a minimum of two de, two additional deputies, and potentially as many as five additional deputies if the schools pick up those, that 75% of up to four school resource officers. The schools are still discussing their budgets, this is something that we would bring back to the council once they'd made a final decision, and we would make adjustments to our Schedule A and go ahead and add the police officers, the deputies, if the council is interested in, in the proposal as it's presented tonight. Of course, the discussion tonight is simply a discussion, there's nothing to be voted on, staff is looking for direction. Couple of other items that the council mentioned that I just want to mention briefly before we get into the hard numbers. Code enforcement, we looked at adding two code enforcement officers, and there is an assumption of some sort of rental fee ordinance to help pay for those two new code enforcement officers. Staff is not advising hiring additional staff at this point in time for two reasons. Number one, because we don't have that revenue coming in yet, and it's still a little bit unsettled as to exactly how much it would be. But also because, as you recall, there was a planning grant that we obtained a couple of years ago, we've actually got two- We've actually got two planners who, at this point, don't have a ton of work to do because that grant has concluded. So staff's recommendation at this point would be to cross-train them into code enforcement, and potentially some of the other planning staff into code enforcement, so that as we implement this new program, we aren't having to hire code enforcement officers and potentially let go of the planning staff. It just seems silly to do that. So we believe they can easily be cross-trained and become more effective that way, so that if there's a need for a big push, you would actually have, you know, as many as maybe 10 to 15 trained code enforcement officers at your disposal into the future as we cross-train. So that's the recommendation on that issue that you brought up. The issue of animal control, at least as of this draft budget, was not one that we felt we could fund. We also wanted to do a little bit more homework with Chief LaChia on the number of calls that his deputies are responding to when animal control is not on. Clearly, everyone in the city would like more animal control officers. It seemed to be, of those three issues, it seemed to be sort of third in line, and that's why we went the way that we did. So as I mentioned, there may be some opportunity for some additional funding coming in, or actually a change. I can talk to you more about that later, after the public hearing, so, excuse me, after the discussion about tonight's budget.
Just a point of clarification while we, we're going to have a draft budget presentation. If councilmembers have any questions at all, please seek assistance from our city manager, or he will direct you to the individuals that can get that answered. Because I have a lot of questions, but they're probably simple answers to it. For example, I know at one time, the city borrowed from a lot of the restricted funds. And one question, or one answer I hope I hear, is that that has a priority to pay those funds back before we spend any kind of monies on new programs. And now, I understand that sometimes the general fund monies are for general funds, and restricted funds are restricted funds, and the intent was to only pay the restricted money back with income from restricted sources. I agree if that money was borrowed only for restricted fund authorization. If it was a straight borrow, that should be a debt of the general fund, and there shouldn't be a surplus. It should be paid back into the restricted funds.
That's absolutely correct. That's absolutely correct. Two other issues I wanted to bring your attention. When we discussed the class and comp study, we had to make a judgment call on whether or not to include it. As I advise in the memo, it is included at the minimum funding level, but should the council decide not to implement it at this time, the savings is about $197,000, as I indicated in that, at least to the general fund, as I indicated in the memo. One last thing that I left off of the memo that I should not have, and I apologize for that, was that with our SEC costs ramping up with a potential trial later this coming fiscal year, our recommendation is that rather than blowing our general fund budget, and rather than skewing our general fund budget for years to come with a big dollar amount, that we actually set up a separate fund, essentially strictly for the SEC costs. It's a little over $1 million estimated impact to the general fund. There's also a couple million, I believe, budgeted in the airport fund as well. And essentially, the way that would work, should the council agree with this recommendation, would be set up as a separate fund that could not be used for other purposes. So if ultimately, we don't spend $1 million on the SEC case, if ultimately, we're able to win at summary judgment, let's say, and we don't spend that $1 million, staff would not have the ability to then rebudget that $1 million somewhere else. Essentially, we're looking at it as a one-time cost and recommending that it be paid out of reserves, rather than totally blowing and skewing the general fund budget. So I've probably spoken more than I wanted and more than you wanted, so with that, I'll turn it over to Adele.
Adele, are you ready?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, I'd like to present our draft budget presentation for fiscal year 1415. In this, this overview that I'll be giving tonight, we'll talk about the economy, unemployment, and consumer confidence. We'll be talking about the citywide revenues and expenditures, and we'll be talking about the general fund revenues and expenditures. The unemployment rate for the city stands at 11.3% as of March 2014, which is 0.3% less than the prior year, and higher than California at 8.4%, and the United States at 6.7%. Unemployment for Victorville is declining slower than the state of California and the United States, and that's shown on this graph right here. We were hoping that it would be a little bit better this year than it is. We're just not declining on our unemployment as well as California and the United States. Then, consumer confidence in the United States decreased to 82.3 in April of 2014, from 83.9 in March of 2014. Lynn Franco, the Director of Economic Indicators at the Conference Board, stated that while sentiment regarding current conditions may have slipped a bit, consumers do not foresee the economy or the labor market losing the momentum that has been building up over the past several months. So our consumer confidence is still strong. Next, we'll be talking about our summary of the revenues and expenditures for citywide. This is all of the entities in which you sit as a board for these, all these citywide entities. Our complete budget for all of them is $194.13 million. The revenues as budgeted for this, in this proposed budget, is $175.37 million. That's up $24.33 million. Our expenditures for operating is $167.86 million, and that's up $38.42 million. The CIP is at $26 million, and that's down about $4 million. The fund balance reductions, in order to make up that shortfall between revenues and expenditures, is $18.76 million, and that's up about $9 million. This next slide shows our budget comparisons since 2007, 2008, in where we've been and where we are now. We're looking like we're approximately back to our fiscal year 11 and 12 year. The citywide operating revenue by type, you can see the different types of revenue that we have for our citywide revenues. Mainly, that one is for charges for services, and that's for our proprietary funds such as water, sanitary, solid waste, SELA, and FEMA. They all are, have revenues from their ratepayers. The next is the expenditures by department, and you can see how varied that is for the $194 million that we are budgeting. Our capital improvement projects are down about $4.6 million, and this lists how those are expensed. And those are also in detail on pages 70, 79 of your budget. Next, we'll be talking about our general fund revenues. And as typical, our taxes are 76% of our general fund revenues. Those include property tax, sales tax, the TOT taxes, and our franchise taxes. Then our general fund expenditures by division. This shows that our public safety is about 66% of our general fund expenditures. This is our budget comparison for the, since fiscal year 2005, 2006, and it shows that we're creeping up a little bit, and we're about where we were in fiscal year 10, 11. Next is our property tax slide, and it shows that we have an increase in property tax up to $16.6 million. The next is our sales tax, sales and use taxes, and we show an increase up to $18.6 million there. And our franchise taxes is increased again. It's about a 4% increase up to $2.9 million. And our transient, our TOTs or our transient occupancy taxes is down a little bit. That's because we budgeted fairly high in 2013, 2014. For those hotels, we leaned, and so we received additional revenue that year, and we don't anticipate seeing that again this year.
Not to debate, but in regard to the transient occupancy tax, because of audits, it was revealed that monies was owed to the city that had not been paid. Did the city collect all that money that was owed?
We have not collected all of it. There's, I think, two more hotels that have not paid completely on that.
Does that payments, those payments that we received, does that show up in the graph we just looked at?
I have, we don't have the complete, the amount that we have for 2013, 14, and so those are budgeted numbers, not actual numbers, because we haven't completed that year.
But we have taken an action to make sure that we do collect the monies that's owed to the city?
That's correct.
Thank you.
What about the fairgrounds? What about their money they owe us?
I haven't included that. I'm not sure exactly how much that is.
We haven't budgeted anticipating receiving those revenues. Had a discussion with fair, new fair manager a few months ago, and we'll be following up with him on his actions that he was going to take once the fair closes next week.
Hopefully, you'll have that meeting as soon as reasonably possible after the fair closes, and possibly have that discussion on anticipated revenue in the new budget year.
The next slide shows our public safety. Our police is, our police budget is $20.6 million, up from the $19.9 million in fiscal year 1314. That's about a 4% increase in the police. The fire is up from $12.7 million up to $12.8 million, which is about a 1% increase in the fire budget. And as Mr. Robertson spoke earlier about, this is our fund balance. As of June 30th, 2013, we have $5.2 million in fund balance. The council has taken action to appropriate about $495,000 in fiscal year 1314. And then, if this budget is approved, we have about another $1 million for that SEC expenditures for legal that would be anticipated for a 1415 year, bringing our fund balance down to about $3.7 million. This concludes our presentation, and we're waiting, waiting for direction.
Thank you. I know you're going to have questions from the councilmembers, but that will come in the next week. And when do we anticipate the public hearing to adopt the budget, Mr. Robertson?
At this point, we're anticipating doing that on June 17th. On the direction we received tonight, and if there's any questions at all, we're happy to answer them either tonight or over the next few weeks.
I'm sure there's going to be questions. I just wondered about the date. I'm sure all the questions will be answered by that time.
We did have a correction to the airport budget that we found after we had produced your budget, and so I'll be handing those out.
Thank you. Is that going to be for each of the councilmembers to add to their proposed budget?
The corresponding sheets.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could request, since we're going to be having a special meeting just to vote on the last item that was on our agenda, if we could hold the budget approval on the same night so that I can participate in that, because I will not be here on the 17th.
So that would be on the 24th? Councilmembers, do you have a problem with the 24th, since we've all indicated we're going to be here? Okay? Does that?
I'm giving staff more time.
More time is fine. I have, I have a late conflict on the 24th that I can talk to you about later, but certainly, if a meeting's starting at 5:00, I'll cross my fingers, and hopefully, I won't have to leave early.
You're not a voting member.
No. At this point, like with the last item, at this point, I will have given you the information. It's simply up to a vote at that point. So I'm confident in staff that they can handle in my absence if I do have to get up and leave.
My understanding is that all we're doing with respect to the last item is voting. It's not a public hearing, correct?
Apparently, it's not a public hearing, but if you want a council discussion or staff input, that's your option.
The only thing, and this goes to Councilmember Vias's request at the last meeting, and looking over this document, it's just a question that I think all of us are somewhat curious on, with the exception of two councilmembers, the golf course and what's going on there. I see numbers all over the place on the golf course, and I think it's a little difficult for us to absorb budgeting for that part of the general fund when we don't know what's going to happen with it. If we don't know what's going to happen with it, how do we budget for it? So it'd be nice to know.
I actually share your confusion and concern over how to budget for the golf course in the next fiscal year. There's actually a closed-session item to follow up the open session with three of the members of the council. We can share more information about the plans with the golf course, and we've got a little firmer budget numbers, I believe, with respect to the golf course that...
I know we can't discuss it, but I just, Mike, it's in here. Three of us have to take that into consideration. And then also, I think, for our city attorney, when we do go to adopt the budget, does that mean two members have to recuse themselves from adopting the entire budget? I mean, that doesn't make any sense.
No, what we should do is we should figure out a way to pull those golf course-related items out of the separate items, so that we don't have a conflict issue.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, we have that set then. The next item are public comment items, and I have two cards. The first card is Juan Linares. Now, this differs with the public hearing. You have three minutes. Sorry about that, but it's not an item that's on the agenda, and therefore, we can't debate and discuss, and we have a different set of rules that kind of prohibit us. But you, please go ahead.
That's okay, because it was, no, all right. It's just, I just wanted to say, it hasn't, the item's been closed. However, I want to, I want to say this. On January 9th, 2014, the city council conducted a strategic planning session to set goals for the next three years. Three of the six prioritized goals identified by the council directly related to the proposed project. These goals are a safer community, higher-value residential, imperdier, cleaner community with pride of ownership, and improved success streets. Development Department staff report was submitted on February 26, 2014. My opinion, the goal, vision, and purpose are very clear. However, the Building Association, namely the Building Industry Association Baldi View Chapter, doesn't like it, so they hired Inland Empire economist John Hewson to provide all of the BS they could muster. Please listen and pay attention, and take note of the following. A city in Texas changed their lot sizes from 6,500 square feet to 12,000 square feet right after the developers purchased the land. The developers, the developers sued, which sounds familiar from what I'm hearing. The Texas Supreme Court found that the city's reasons for rezoning was legitimate, and quoted, "Land development is inherently speculative. It is the risk borne by the developer, and developers should expect the risk of rezoning, particularly in growing communities." The court found the legitimate public policy reasons supported the city's rezoning decision. It found the city dragged on its own decision-making process to extract concessions from the developers, which, in my opinion, is reversed here. The developers are trying to drag out the process so they can get concessions from the city. I quote the chairman of the Planning Commission, "We really have an elephant to eat, and I like to eat it a bite at a time. There's just too much at once." BIA Baldi View Chapter CEO Carlos Rodriguez said prior to the commission's vote, "I ask, what is this rush? Why must we move forward tonight? Because it's the right thing to do for the city, Mr. Rodriguez." I'm sorry, he's not here. Mr. Rodriguez also asked, "Why aren't we answering the numerous questions that have been put forth?" Because they are not questions, they are BS. A good job by the Houston and BIA. There's more, but I can't say it.
You can submit that to the city clerk if you would like, and she will reproduce it for all the councilmembers to read, if you would like to do that.
That's, yeah. Like I said, I missed the public hearing or the, on the, on the actual issue.
That would have been interesting information. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I do want to read it. Thank you. The next card that I have, Mr. Lionel Do.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I come here to share my thoughts regarding the city of Victorville. The city of Victorville has primarily always had the best of everything. That's not to say that the city of Victorville is far supremely more than Alpa Valley, Hesperia, and other neighboring cities, but the city of Victorville has always presented to citizens the best of both worlds. As relates to lot sizes or where a person chooses to live, you have the opportunity to present... to present that to the citizens of Victorville in a way that's smart, that requires an executive decision. By my definition, an executive decision is a far-reaching decision, which requires much study and a lot of consideration of many things. So I am not opposed to large, a lot size. In fact, I, I think it would be the opportunity to look ahead to what the city of Victorville will look like in the future. There are, we have medical facilities here, we have school districts, we have public safety, and as relates to public safety, as much as some may feel very secure in parks, it poses a threat as relates to where we are today. No one wants to have their child out of their sight. They refer their child be playing in the backyard, things of that nature, and we have a population, or we're in an era today that nothing really surprises us that much as relates to public safety that we look at the 6 o'clock news. I recognize the fact that this decision will not come easy, but I am confident that you would take every consideration in hand in making that decision, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Do. The other, the only other card I have, the last card that I have is Robert Harriman. Harriman, if you'd come up, please.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Marcy is going to give you guys all a couple photos I've put together. I'd like to talk about the lot size. I've, I've grinded this now for a couple of months, and I've come to the solution in my mind that there's got to be a, a level, I mean, it's, it, we can't have it one way or the other, so I'm thinking, in my personal opinion, a little of both. Why can't these developers, whether it's a planned unit development or a housing track, why can't they offer, I mean, these guys, when they build these tracks, they offer, what, five models? Typically, five models. Why can't they offer a couple with oversized lots with 15-foot setbacks? We all know how many people today, not just in Victorville, everywhere. I mean, it's astonishing to me, since this all has gone down. I have started to, when I drive around, look at all the people that have recreational vehicles. It is, it is off the charts. I mean, it, why can't, why can't one of these developers just do a housing track called Campers World and sell them on the aspect that this is where you could park your RV and your boat, and you don't have to pay for a storage facility? I mean, it, it, there's so many options out there. Mr. DeFazio, I, I've done over, I'm a concrete contractor. I've done over 150 homes for Dino, okay? Almost all of them, Apple Valley, a minute amount in Hesperia, and a very, very small amount in, in Victorville. Me and him are kind of seeing eye to eye on this. He's boasting about a track that he has been involved in that has one or a number of models that have a 12-foot setback. Says that's plenty. I disagree with that. It's more like 15. 12 will work. It depends on the front setback. If the house is closer to the sidewalk, 12 feet, you're not going to get something back there. If the house sits back farther, 12 feet will be adequate. But a 15-foot setback for one in 10 homes? Is that asking too much? Okay? I, it, it, it has to, it, it has to be, it, I just can't stand, well, let's look at the pictures I, I've given you guys. That is my track.
10 seconds.
Look at that, you guys. I've been in my house for 25 years. That was one of the first planned unit developments in the city of Victorville. In fact, there were, were no others. I think the only other homes that were even track home type were Liberty Homes, which are on half-acre lots. That is the first planned unit development. Look what's happened to it. I have to deal with that every day, okay?
Thank you.
All right, everybody, have a good, and I was late.
I know, we, we start normally at 6:00. We started at 5:00. I think it threw some people off, but we got, we got through it. Next item on the agenda is, are we going to have a closed session, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, Mayor Cox, there are two closed session items. The first one is existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Shadow View Corporation et al. versus the city of Victorville. Case number is on the agenda. And the second is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D4. To the extent there is reportable action, we will come out and report that.
Well, before we go into executive session, we normally have an item on the agenda for comments by the council members. Councilmember Vias asked that she receive the worksheets, and Mr. Kennedy indicated that he wanted to be able to look at the data. I indicated, great, because I wanted to look at the data, but we couldn't have a committee of three. I asked Councilmember Kennedy, Councilmember Vias, if they would work together on this, and was reminded probably that we ought, I ought to do this so that's on the record, that they constitute a, a committee rather than two individual, two council members who are simply working by themselves, in case somebody felt that they were somehow not doing this and not working with the rest of the council. They did it at my request. So just for the record, I guess it's a personal ad hoc committee because I would like to do it, but I'm going to be unavailable, as I, as I mentioned, and so I'm going to have to rely on these two individuals to go through that, and then hopefully, when we come back, we can have a report back to the whole council from that committee. Is anyone objecting to that? If not, I'll appoint them as the official ad hoc committee. At this point in time, any other comments from the council members before we go into executive session? If not, we're going to go into executive session, and we will come out after executive session and report to the public any items that are required to be reportable. Thank you.
Better from Gibson Dunn to Chris Waters. Putting a response together on that.
All right, we held closed session this evening on two items that were fully set forth on the agenda. One was existing litigation, one was anticipated litigation, and at this time, there is no reportable action with respect to either item.